Matter, this is Stephanie Texera, Vice Chair of the Grafton Library Board of Library Trustees. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Yes, okay. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Erin Vanderstein?
Here.
Doug Bowman?
Here.
John Borbusky?
Here.
And staff members, when I call your name, please reaffirm in the affirmative. Beth Schreiber?
Present.
And Debbie Jackson-Moore?
Here.
Thank you. Good evening. This is an open meeting of the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees. This meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. As such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. An order which you have confined posted on the town's website at www.grafton-mash.gov allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment at the end. For this meeting, the Grafton Library Trustees are convening video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials have been provided to the members of this body and are available on the town's website, unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the vice chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to participate and provide any comment or questions or motions. Please hold any comments until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your computer or phone when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage colloquially with other members, please do so through the chair and take care to identify yourself. Public comment will be open at the end of the meeting. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. And for the record, member Dana Wilson, can you confirm that you are here?
Yes, I can confirm.
All right, thank you. So at 7:09, I call to order the meeting of the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees for Wednesday, September 28th, 2022. As first order of business, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the August 24th, 2022 meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from August 24th, 2022.
Thank you, Doug.
I second it.
Second. Thank you, Dana. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, move for a vote. Doug Bowman?
Aye.
Erin Vanderstein?
Aye.
John Borbusky?
Aye.
Dana Wilson?
Aye.
And Stephanie Texera, aye. Thank you. Well, now move on to approval of the bills. Do we have a motion, a joint motion to approve FY '23 bills, number nine, 10, 11, and 13?
I make a motion to approve the bills fiscal year 2023 warrants nine, 10, 11, and 13.
Thank you, Erin. Do we have a motion to second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, I move for a vote. Doug Bowman?
Aye.
Erin Vanderstein?
Aye.
John Borbusky?
Aye.
Dana Wilson?
Aye.
And Stephanie Texera, aye. Thank you. We're now going to move on to ongoing business.
I just have a real quick, sorry, just a real quick question on the warrants, Beth. If you can include like the line items, it's usually in there. I know at least one of the warrants did not have line items. It was one of the smaller warrants, so.
Okay.
I don't know who generates that.
Me. So I get three reports now. One is a signature page. The next is a summary. And then there's an itemized without the invoices, like every single transaction. And I usually send that full packet out to the board either at the same time or the day after I send it to accounting. And then for the purpose of the meeting, because it makes the meeting packet too big, I usually just do that cover sheet.
I got it, okay.
And I did do, I apologize, I did do 13 late. And I think Marty said, oh, we never got nine, so nine and 13 came a little bit late, but it did have everything. I'm happy to go back and show them individually or answer questions, so I'll be more conscientious.
No worries.
There were two big ones for $10,000 each, and then two smaller ones, $1,000 and $3,000. And so that is that we just paid or will be paying this Thursday, right? Because we're always a week off. So last week, 13 is to pay bills that go out with tomorrow's check. We finally got our fiscal '22 encumbrances paid off. We had purchase orders and spent right through June 30th, so a big chunk of money went to Ingram, which is why it was so high.
Thank you, Beth, for that clarification. Does anybody else have any other questions before we move on? Okay, moving on to ongoing business. The MPLCP building program and grant update, Beth?
Sure. We still have HVAC HVAC on our punch list, still trying to finish our commissioning, make sure that the thermostats are at the set points that we need them to be, and make sure that everything is working. So that's just ongoing. Don't let sign off on our gate for the bottom of the stairs that will allow us to walk off the second floor and allow facility rental on Friday night, Saturday night, and during the day on Sunday is scheduled to come tomorrow. And they may take a day or two to get it together. We'll see. Hopefully it fits and works the way we want it to. We're still waiting and have signed off to approve the closing folding style doors for both the teen maker space and for the presentation area and community AV. So those are like just the leftover things. As previous staff are training our new staff in how to use the AV in various parts of the room, whether it's a room with a smart TV or a room with a projector, we're finding that not all of the HDMI plugs in the wall actually connect to the projector or the TV. And because, you know, we didn't have public meetings and we didn't have meeting rooms available, we didn't realize that those weren't working. So we're, I sent a list to the construction team today so we can try and resolve that. I don't know if it's going to be an external cable or breaking into the wall, or maybe it's already there and it's just not working. But it's frustrating a year in to find things that we didn't know didn't work. We've had a complaint from staff about the display case that's in the lobby. Part of the reason it's been empty is because it is very, very difficult to use. There's two heavy glass panels with glass shelving, and you have to literally push on the glass to slide the door back and forth, which does not feel safe. So we've asked for a handle solution, and architect came back with that pretty quickly. And now we're just waiting to see if that's in stock. It's probably going to have like a double sided tape kind of a handle so we can slide it, and custodial greased the track for us to get it to slide a little bit. I think the most exciting thing was that last month, the piano got delivered. And I had somebody walk in. I don't know if he read in a report that we had it, but he's somebody who came in six months ago to ask if our facility would be available to rent for him to have a recital for his youth students. And I said, I'll take your name and number. I'll call you back when we have it. He caught up with me before I caught up with him, paid me cash to book the space on a Sunday in January, because the gates will be there by then. So we're going to have a piano recital, I think, January 8th, from a local teacher on a Sunday afternoon. It will be free and open to the public, but the library will not be open. So this will be like the first test of how that works.
Excellent. That's great.
Yeah, super exciting.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Yes, Beth. I mean Dana.
This is for Beth. It's from Dana Wilson. And I apologize for not understanding this, but are we, if people are renting out the space, are we making money from it? Is the library getting some money from this? Or is it true that it's for nonprofits, there's no charge?
After hours, there's a charge.
Okay.
Yeah. So if it's a Friday night, a Saturday night, or a Sunday, there's a fee.
Okay, so if, but if there, if a nonprofit wants to do something during the week, you have the hours when the library is normally open, you're just charging them to clean up or something?
No, there's no fee. So a nonprofit, like League of Women Voters, is coming in to do a program, I think, at the end of October, and it's free and open to the public, so.
Okay.
And they're not for profit, so there's no charge.
Okay, so our thought is that we might be able to make some money with some nonprofit, and we want to be good to the community, because they've been crying for about 20 years for a space. So, okay, that makes sense. I just want to understand it, because I thought it would be good. I thought we all wanted like a little bit of a way to have an account to have, you know, building up some money so we can buy stuff that the library needs, that Beth needs.
So we have a revolving account for that purpose.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay.
And like the, someone needs to pay the piano tuner. So if we're able to rent the room when the piano is in use and we have that money, then we can use it to tune piano.
Okay, sounds good. I thought it was that, but I just, I wanted clarity. Thank you.
We have a small force of garden volunteers who have been working mostly on Tuesday morning to keep the garden grounds looking really nice. And we have benches that arrive, and they're going to, I'm going to meet to talk about where they're going to go and get them put together, so progress.
Exciting things. Glad to be seeing the finish line coming with those. Does anybody have any questions regarding that for Beth? No? All right, Beth, can you take us through your FY '23 budget update?
I don't have one, because I still don't have it from accounting. So I still remain concerned that we have unexpected costs that I did not budget for. For example, one of the warrants included a cost for a carpet cleaner. We cleaned carpets, I think, in August, because the town had said they would buy a carpet cleaner in July, and they didn't. And we had to get the carpets cleaned, so like that was an unexpected expense that we had to pay. There was an additional biblioteca invoice. I don't know how closely people look at it. But something got left off of their quote for service for the year. Luckily, it didn't exceed what I had anticipated the cost to be, so that was fine. An area of concern is the security support for the video camera system and the staff key card system. I and two other staff members got training about a year ago. We took good notes. But like I'm following all the steps. I make a key card for a new staff member. They go to get in the building, and it doesn't work. And it's like $700 to have the company respond. We're required to pay them prevailing wage, and it's very, very expensive, and it's not budgeted for. And we also, because we had to zero out many line items in our account for this year, like technically, there's no money for staff reimbursement for dues for professional organizations. There's no money for professional development. There's no money for marketing. We agree that programming would come out of our gift account, because we had a very generous donation from Unibank. So it's just something to be aware of, that we've, you know, we're logging along and okay so far for the, still in the first quarter of the fiscal year. But I'm concerned that we have zero account numbers and expenses and unexpected costs.
All right.
So we're not over budget at this point, but it's early.
Okay, a question before we move on. Do you have any idea from accounting? Have they gotten back to you as to when they should be responding to that?
No, but I, I email, usually they just automatically send out a report every month or like, you know, two weeks into the month for the previous month. And they haven't done anything since July. However, I'm required to report to the state our FY '22 financials for the ARIS report, so we can get our state aid. So I emailed today to say, here are the numbers I need. If there is a way for me to run this report myself, I would be happy to learn.
Okay.
Pretty overwhelmed.
Thank you. Erin?
Beth, this is regarding the door keys. I have some experience with the Aurora KeyScan software, if that's what you guys are using.
It's up they do on, and they said it's difficult, and no one's ever heard of it, and.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I've never heard of that.
Literally just change somebody's name. And the card used to work for the last employee, and it doesn't for the new employee, and I'm still.
Okay, well, if you need a volunteer, I'd be happy to look at it for you, so just reach out to me.
Thanks.
Thank you, Erin. Doug?
Yeah, I would just add mainly maybe for John's benefit, but, you know, we do get state aid money. So this is money that comes from the state, state, from the state each year. And so for some of these expenses that Beth is talking about, you know, at any point, like, let's say, the carpet cleaning, you know, that is something that we could decide to pay out of state aid at some point. Or, you know, we typically would wait maybe towards the end of the year, when we might be getting in, getting in the need to use that state aid.
And to that point, further down in the agenda, I do have funding requests for staff professional development, because ordinarily, I would budget a couple thousand dollars for that through the course of the year. That was one of the items we chose to zero and literally wrote into the FY '23 budget. Here is the estimated cost. Revenue sources to cover this expense are going to have to come from somewhere else, since the town is not picking up the bill for it, whether that's state aid or gift money or a grant or something else.
Thank you, Beth. Does anyone have any additional questions regarding the budget? Dana?
I had a very quick question regarding the cleaning. I think it's really important that we clean the rugs. Does it, I know the town said they'd buy one. If we bought one, we still don't have anybody to do the work, so we should just pay for someone to come and do it.
No.
Now, we got to.
They didn't buy one. They did buy one. They just didn't buy it in time for us to clean before the Mass Board of Library Commissioners came for their scheduled end of August program.
Okay, so.
We waited as long as we could, and then I'm just like, we have to pay to clean the carpet.
Do we have anybody to actually clean the carpet?
We do now, and the room, it looks great. Custodial, thank you Paul Farrar, came in over the long Labor Day weekend and cleaned the carpets in the entire building. Yeah, then they look great.
Terrific.
And now they're looking a little worn, because we've had a lot of carpet. But he's able to do it.
Fantastic.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, again, thank you to the custodians. Any other questions on this matter? No. All right, let's move down to the IT update. Beth, I know you just talked about the key cards. Is there anything else of note?
Yeah. I've had two complaints in the last month from patrons concerned about privacy on the adult computers. There are four computers that face out right across from the circulation depth. And I think the concern is like somebody walking by could stand behind the patron and, unknown to them, snap a photo or write down whatever private information that patron was inputting into a website somewhere or into a Word document. Social Security numbers that, you know, that kind of thing. And our response was, we have posted right at that computer desk that privacy is unfortunately not a guarantee. We do protect the privacy of information that patrons give up willingly for their library cards and their library accounts. But it's very hard for us to control what people are inputting into the computer. One solution is the software that we have in the works, DeepBreeze, where anything you download, any website you go to, once you reset the computer, everything gets wiped out. So that's a help for anyone sitting down after the patron and, you know, trying to delve back into whatever they were doing to get information. It doesn't necessarily help the problem of somebody walking behind the computer. We've never offered or had anybody request any kind of privacy screens, but this might be a potential future funding request to the board with state aid money. And I'm sure Erin or Doug could say how much money it could be per screen if you were going to put a film on a laptop or some kind of a filter screen right over the monitor. The idea is then only the person right in front of the screen can see, and it works kind of like a hologram. You shift a little to the left or right at an angle, and now you don't have as direct a view. It still means somebody could walk around behind a patron and stand there and get a look at what they were doing, but it would give at least more of an illusion of security. I did bring this question to Legal, who said we are not obligated to do anything except say, thank you. This is a public computer. It's a public library, and you are entering into a risky situation by transmitting private information, social security or credit card numbers. Our policy actually says that we don't recommend using the computers for that purpose, and it's posted at the computers on the screen, where you have to click to agree to that policy before you proceed, and also on the computer sign up sheet. But two complaints in the last month is, you know, two more than we've ever had. So I want everybody to be aware of it. I don't have an ETA yet for when our laptops are going to be deployed. They are in the hands of CMD still to get all the software on them. So another future solution is check out a laptop, take it to a meeting room, and now only you can see what you're doing on that computer.
All right, thank you, Beth. Erin, did I see a hand?
Yeah, I think the privacy screens are anywhere between $15 and $100, just for the film.
Yeah.
So.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Beth regarding the IT? Hearing none, let's move on to an update from Doug Bowman regarding the Grafton Public Library's capital campaign.
Yeah, I can give a quick update. The, as Beth mentioned, the piano was delivered and installed. Just a reminder, that was paid for by capital campaign funds by, through donations. So that's great that that's received. She also mentioned the park benches, so I've been working with, to put in an application with the Historic District Commission, just to get approval for putting them there, because since it's on the front of the library and visible to the common, that was approved. So we have a layout on where they're going to go, and the DPW has agreed to build a couple concrete platforms to place them. So I think we're good. I think we'll get that moving here in the next, probably next week. Let's see, what else did I have? Beth mentioned the Evergreen, the green roofs. Those were also put in through campaign funds and donations. Where I'm working with the Evergreen person to figure out the annual maintenance contract and what type of contract we need. We've been playing a little bit of phone tag this week. So I don't really have an answer for that right now. And Beth has also put in a request for additional shelving for the children's room that the capital campaign is willing to fund, so I think that's in process, too. I don't know if you had anything else, Dana?
Um, I, um, I would just, just add that, and I think I was going to, had to send Beth an email, but we have like the final proofs of all the plaques almost. We will be ready, I think, within the next day or two. And I thought I would see if Beth could have somebody proofread them all, if that's okay. And we have the same thing with the donor wall, so we're like, I would say, within the next couple of days, with everything will be in production, and then we'll have some due dates. And I do have to talk about, I have to talk to Doug about something. One of the, one of the, we're redoing, we're paying for and redoing the plaque, the library dedication plaque, so I just need to discuss some details with him. That is part of this project, and that will be done at the same time. And the other thing is, I'm, I've asked, I think Sunshine's going to come and take it off the wall for me, because I have to have that walk, we have to have that wall fixed for them in, to order to hang up a new sign and a plaque, so I have to work on that. That's part of that. But we're almost done with this, and then we'll see what happens. It would be nice to plan an event. I hope that we can do so.
First, Doug and Dana, thank you so much for your constant work on the capital campaign. Doug, question for you regarding the benches. Would they be the same that are in the common right now?
They are basically the same. They're slightly different. They're like a dark green, which I think the ones on the common are actually black, although from a distance, you can't really tell the difference.
Right.
Our, our benches on the library are going to be redwood. I mean, they're plastic, but they're redwood colored to match the other bench that we had in the library prior to the renovation. The ones on the common are more of a tan color, but very similar. And one thing I did notice on the pads on the common is that there's actually a space to the side of the bench, which is for like a wheelchair or a stroller or something to sit next to the, to the bench. So we'll make sure that DPW does that for us.
Awesome, thank you. And Dana, again, thank you so much for working hard on the plaques. Will, once you have all of those proofed, will you get a timeline as to the completion of those at, at that time? Or do you kind of have a window when we should get those in?
I have a window, but I, I, it all, I have to find out. I can get a window, but I think, I thought it's going to, I think it's, what, at end of September? I think it probably will be done by December, but I can get a window on that. We've had some ups and downs, but we're getting there. Mostly ups, but we're, it's going to be, I mean, what's going to be good about it? Everything that's hanging will be accurate. So we've done some of the work that we didn't think we were going to do, but we did. So I will let you know. We're very close, and then we can figure out something. Because I, not, not to keep on, I, we didn't, I know that I was, way back when, like, was it two years ago that we met and had people get together to do, who would do the dedication? Who would do the dedication party and event? And then they, and the big party, and I did the dedication event, because it happened. But we haven't had a party yet, so we'll have to revisit that and see if there's anyone that does want to help us from the community and figure out what we need to do, or we're just, we have to just, I have to figure that out, because we should all have some donor events, too. So I guess, once we have timelines, and maybe I might have some conversations with Beth about that and figure out what we should, should and shouldn't do.
All right, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for either Doug or Dana? No? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the Friends membership and update. Before we open that up, I just want to let everyone know that I had to formally step down from being the liaison last month, so if anybody wants to take that on, instead of it being on Beth's plate also, please let us know. But Beth, if you have an update, we'd appreciate it.
I think the biggest update is they have a fundraising event this weekend, Sunday, October 2nd, from noon to 4:00 PM. You can follow the link on our website or on their Facebook page, I think, to purchase in advance. I think it's $5 a person with a cap, maybe $20 per family, to come and play mini golf at the library. 18 holes. They've asked for sponsorship from local businesses, and the holes will have names for local landmarks. So this is our third Caddystacks event. They are still looking for help, so I would say email info@friendszpl.org if you're available. Info@friendszpl.org if you're available. And I think that if you're willing to commit to an hour or two, you'll get to play for free. They're also doing a deal. I know a lot of us wait till the end of the year to renew our friends' membership. But if you pay your twenty-five dollars, pay twenty-five dollars to renew your membership, you get free tickets to attend at the event. So that's very exciting. They agreed to fund or or, you know. Not so much agree to fund, they they give us about ten thousand dollars a year. So most of that goes toward museum passes. The rest of it goes towards summer reading and then we also buy raffle baskets. So it will have two friends sponsored gift bags in their new tote bags at Oktoberfest, which is coming up, I think, October, Saturday, October fifteenth. I'm not sure when their next meeting is, but they've already got two fall fundraisers going with the mini golf and the bag sales. And then their next all ages book sale, I believe, is Saturday, November fifth. It's usually ten to four. And they'll probably be looking for volunteers for that.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about the fundraisers or Friends event? And if anybody wants to, again, start attending though, they're once a month. You can reach out to myself or Beth and we can talk to you about it.
Have you heard anything about numbers for caddy stacks? Like, are they close to fall or anything? No, yeah, okay, I was just curious.
I think they have a sponsor for every hole, but I'm not sure. For some reason, the emails keep going to my CW Mars account, which I check like every other week. That's where the conversation is. I don't know. I gave them a long list of people who participate in the farmer's market and suggested they ask those folks.
I think there's, there was a list that I was sent a list, so I'll send it to everybody because I was asked to go to caddy stacks. I can't, that, I was one of the people that first started that, but I can't. I have to work that day, but I would say every trustee should go. Because it's a fundraiser for the friends and we want to support them. Plus, we need to be out in the community, meeting people. And if we, if Debbie can go, that would be good too. I mean, she probably will anyway with her kids. But I took my kids to it like what, I mean, how many years ago with that? We had a blast. Heidi dressed all up. And it was, it was in the old library and this is going to be so cool. I can't believe it. I wish I could be there. It's, I'm so. Pleased that they're doing that. It's a really great, it's a great fundraiser. And also, it's really cool for me to sit here and Beth is just talking about how we're going to do raffle raffle baskets. For some of the schools, you know, for their fundraisers. And that's something that I that I create, I helped with like. Many years ago and it was initially, it took a little while to get. An okay. And now now our relationship with the schools is so great and it's just. It's it's really gratifying. I mean, Beth has done a great job, but we, it's just like little by little. You know, that's how you get these relationships going and I'm really, it's really, it's really neat for me to see that and it. It really makes a huge difference for the library to have a good relationship with the schools because. That's how we reach out to a lot of young people and their parents. So it's critical. So thank you, Beth.
Oh, well, thank you. We can always use trustee help at our library Oktoberfest booth. That event is Saturday. October fifteenth, I believe it is at North Grafton Elementary School. Is it Waterville Street? No, Debbie shaking.
No, it should be south.
Okay, sorry. Some South Grafton, really? Okay.
That's where it normally is. If it's it's that's put by on by those folks, right? Yeah. It's where it's been for years. I could be wrong, but it's.
I thought Fun Fair was the May one, but okay.
The yeah, the Fun Fair is the May one. That's at the North Grafton. The south one is that. It's usually, I mean, my kids loved it. We went for years, even when they got bigger.
Wherever it is, I have two staff going and they're they're worried that they're going to be overwhelmed. So if you think you might be interested in showing up on Saturday the fifteenth. Especially during lunchtime to meet and greet and let my poor staff have lunch. It would be really helpful and appreciated. Just send me an email. And I'll connect with Sarah.
All right. Um, was there a walkabout that anyone did in the last month?
So I, well, I did a walkabout on the outside, just glanced at some new things. I was mainly focusing on the landscaping. So I did notice a couple. Bushes that we had planted as part of the project that didn't survive. And so I've reached out to Peralt. And the capital campaign can fund that if it wasn't under warranty, but so hopefully those will get replaced this fall. Otherwise, I didn't see anything major.
All right. Thank you. Have they gotten back to you yet?
No, this was just on Monday.
Oh, okay.
Dana, I just want to ask a quick question that's related to that. I don't know, it was probably about six months ago that I noticed. The one of the. I don't, it's the stone, the stone wall that's meant to be a seat for teenagers. The one edge of it had come off and I know I I took a picture and told people about it and Beth. Might, I might, I think I talked to you about it. Has that been resolved? Because. I don't know how, it would, it could have been just where, but it was a lot, it was quite a while ago.
I think their feeling was that the period of installation had passed. If you were looking for a warranty fix. So I was to see someone. I mean, Doug was probably planning on coming to the. Library Planning and Building Committee meeting, right, on Monday. So you can try to bring it up there, but I got shut down.
Okay, so we need to get it repaired because doesn't it look pretty bad? I thought it might deteriorate more. Okay, I'll go and take some pictures of it. We'll figure it out.
This is the teen patio?
I should have included in the grant update, we did solve the leak at the teen door. It turns out that an overflowing gutter was causing the issue. So once they got the debris out of the gutter. They also did some caulking around the door and then in the last rain, it did not leak.
Right.
Thank you. Um, Beth, where the fall is coming up and we anticipate the gutters are going to get. Clogged again, is that kind of scheduled where they're going to check them out?
So here's, yeah, so here's the thing. Normally, we only do it in the fall. So we did it last year and then it started leaking in the spring. So we'll have our regular gutter cleaning, excuse me, probably, I usually like to do it around the end of November when everything has had a chance to blow off of the trees. And then in the interim, what we can do is ask the custodial team to just, you can kind of tell just by knocking on the gutter that it's getting full. So they can be keeping an eye on it during the year.
All right. Thank you. Moving on, Beth, could you provide us with a COVID nineteen update?
Sure. Nothing has changed. We don't have a mask mandate. I take a look at the report that comes through. It's usually on Friday afternoons or Saturday that gives the case count for the week. It's been at like twelve, thirteen, and then I think it was twenty-two this past week. So townwide, you know, cases are increasing, which makes sense with people being back to school. We've not really tapped, you know, programming numbers or anything like that. Masks are available, but we're not requiring people to use them. We did decide to add a second story time session though, because we. Had been running it as drop in, didn't want to limit by making people sign up, but there were like. Fifty people trying to cram into the very small children's programming room. So Sarah and I chatted and her solution was, well, let's just add a second session. And then what will happen is the people who want the quieter experience will end up in one group and the people who don't mind the kids running around while the story is being read will kind of self-select into the other group. And we'll be able to serve everybody, but with a little bit more space and social distancing. So that's what should be happening this fall. Good COVID related, if you want the social distance.
Yes, thank you. Does anybody have any other questions regarding the unchanged COVID protocol? So that concludes our ongoing business. Let's move on to new business. These materials were provided and are on the town's website. So first, the twenty twenty-three library closings calendar. Do we have a motion? To approve?
I I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three closing dates, because then that can open up for questions, right?
Thank you. Yes. Is there a motion to second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the matter? Doug?
Just a comment from Beth, like, is this the same schedule as last year, basically? Or is there anything new or either more or less?
Well, I say what's what's new is Juneteenth. So we, there's no special library holiday. We follow the town of Grafton's calendar. And where we differ is because unlike the municipal center, we're open on Saturday. Staff never get paid for a Saturday. They get paid for a Friday or a Monday. But sometimes we give them a long weekend with no pay, meaning we have to do schedule shifting. But it, you know, it might look like because we're closed for two days, people are getting more money or more holidays and they're not. So what's new is that Juneteenth had been added. And Indigenous Peoples' Day is a renaming from town meeting from, I don't know, a year and a half ago. So that might look a little bit different. In the past, we've asked for three professional development days. This year, we asked for, I think, four, one in March. One in August, one in, oh, I guess we're still at three, but they're, we're opening from two to six. Or two to nine, I guess they're on Thursdays. So that's different as well.
Great. Thank you, Beth. And just for anybody who might watch this later, can you just confirm that those Saturdays that we are closed? That is not a holiday, that every, all the library personnel will be able to work their full shifts that week?
Yeah.
And not losing hours.
Right. So for example, for Memorial Day, if we're closed Saturday and you were normally scheduled for Saturday. You work Friday instead. Generally, Friday is the day off for Saturday. And then Monday is the paid holiday for that week.
Right. Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions regarding? This?
Did we double check all these dates? Because I know I haven't. We know them to be correct.
I did them. Debbie looked at them. Sarah Bannister looked at them. And then it was on the board to look at them and find any errors before we put it up in front of you tonight.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
All right. Hearing no more discussion. Doug Bowman? Erin?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Dana?
I.
And myself, I. Stephanie. All right. If we can move on to the two thousand and twenty-three Board of Library Trustees Meeting Calendar. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Thanks, John. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Doug. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing no discussion, I'll bring it to a vote. Doug?
I.
Erin?
Erin, I.
John?
John, I.
Dana?
I.
And Stephanie, I. Before we move to the next item. I know that in our meeting requests, the Policy Committee also put out their dates of meeting. We don't have to vote on that, correct?
I don't think we do, but I think the Policy Committee should look at it at their next meeting and make sure that the dates I suggest are okay. So.
All right. Thank you. So let's move on to the funding request of three hundred dollars for conference registration. And a hundred and forty, a hundred and seventy-four dollars for staff management training. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the funding request for three hundred dollars for conference registration and a hundred and seventy-four dollars for the staff management training.
Thank you, Erin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding the motion of either? Beth?
Yes. I'm sorry if it wasn't clear. There were three separate requests. One for three hundred for Neela. One for a hundred and, or I forget, twenty-five, I think, for five managers to attend a management training. And then one for forty-nine dollars. So it does total a hundred and seventy-four, but it was three, not two.
All right.
And I can show those invoices if you'd like to.
So the total amount that was in the motion was approved. So I think we're okay there. Erin?
So on the staff management training, do you have new managers or is it just kind of ongoing development?
I have new, I have managers who became supervising librarians, never got any training beyond here's how you manage. So, yeah, there's a company called Library Work that has very good training, very affordable. I think once you get four people, it's. Drop down to twenty-five dollars a person. So I asked the management team, out of this list of topics, is there anything in particular that any one of you might like to take? And your two or three people said this one in particular, I believe it was on how to give and receive feedback. Criticism, particularly job performance related criticism. So I said, all right, why don't we just buy five seats and all five of us will do it. And the other one is a volunteer training. And Kara, our new head of borrower services, has inherited a volunteer program. She's had lots of managerial experience. But this one is specifically volunteer, so I suggested that that might be helpful for her. And then I'm the one going to New England Library Association in October.
Right. Thank you, Beth. Is there any more discussion?
Only a comment that, you know, that volunteers are so important to the library. And as I kind of mentioned, it's, they're not really free, right? And it's a lot of effort for them to come and to get them to come. So I'm definitely in favor of that one.
Great idea.
Great that you're doing that.
Absolutely. Thank you. So hearing no additional discussion, we'll bring it to a vote. Doug?
I.
Thank you, Erin?
Erin, I.
John?
John, I.
Dana?
I.
And Stephanie, I. All right. We did just talk about the volunteer requests that are coming up. The mini golf on ten two, Oktoberfest on ten fifteen. And Halloween on ten thirty-one. Does anybody want to elaborate on those a little bit more? I know we already talked about them earlier.
Halloween is a particular concern. In the past, we've been out in front of the building. But this year, we're looking for people to stand outside in costume. That would be friends and trustees. Say, please go in and stop at each desk to pick up a treat. We're aiming to do things around our emotional wellness theme because it falls at the end of Emotional Wellness Week. So we're gonna have, you know, I don't know, manipulatives and and that kind of thing. We often do allergen aware. Non-food treats. So this all ties in really well together, but we're looking for bakers to, you know, wave people in. And yes, there's a bathroom and yep, they're open till nine. Go ahead and. That sounds like fun. Send me an email.
Yeah, I said I would do it. I have to get a costume though. And my, do you want any adult teenagers to help there?
Sure. Yeah.
I think my son may help me and maybe even my daughter.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Doug, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Any other discussion on the volunteer requests? Seeing none, I'm going to close out new business and move on to policy update from the chair, Erin. Could you give us an update?
Great. Thank you, Stephanie. Yeah, so we had a really interesting meeting. Sad to say that that John wasn't feeling well. He couldn't join us, but we had Beth and Debbie and myself and we were joined. By Christie Proctor from the. Grafton Disability Commission. I think that's the right term. It was really great because she really went out of her way to make sure that she could attend our meeting. And in fact, she was on, she was on Zoom and. Driving home safely, I might add, because when she. When she needed to comment, she she pulled over and made sure that she was in a safe place to to talk with us. So it was great. So we we took another look at the unaccompanied adult policy. Which I I believe has been on their agenda for. For for a while. And so I invited Christie to 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 come talk with us. And it was really great to have someone from from that committee. You know, she said that generally when you're working with. When you have a policy that. You know. Is being put into place for a disabled. In this case, a disabled. is being put into place for a disabled, in this case, a disabled adult. She said the most important thing is that the outcome of the disabled adult was acceptable. And in this case, in this particular incident, it was. And so, you know, even though others may have felt that they were wronged in some way or the policy was unjust. I mean, we had legal take another look at it. And, you know, we as a policy committee couldn't really find any other changes, but to that effect. So that feedback was really great. And having Christie also provides some more insight. She said that the, the best thing that we can do for all of our policies in general is always have a I don't want to say a clause at the end, but basically a way to show that it's not a closed and it's a closed discussion, that there's an appeal process, right? So you can first talk to, you know, the supervisor on duty, who can then take it to the director, who can then take it to the policy committee and then take it to the board, right? And always put a time limit with anything that's, you know, with those sort of appeal processes, she says, very important. So Beth kind of described that and she said, that's fantastic. So I think we're, we're in a good place with that. And Beth is writing up some language regarding that. So we're gonna take a look at that at the next policy committee meeting and then take another look at the unaccompanied adult policy. So we also looked at the 3D printer policy. It's gone to legal. We spoke briefly about it. The I think the 3D printer is really, we feel is gonna be a draw for the, for the community. In that it was really purchased specifically for the teen, the teen and tweens area, right? So there really wasn't any intention for giving adults access to that area to do projects. But Christie said very simply, how about a 3D printer for the adult space, you know? So I think that's something we're willing to consider. And I think there's some, some options out there that are within our reach. We also started looking at the piano policy because the piano has arrived and we'd like to have a policy so that people can begin to request time to play it. So we had some basic discussion regarding how restrictive the, we want the policy to be, right? I mean, we certainly didn't feel like we wanted to just allow anybody to walk in and just open it up and start playing on it with no proficiency. So there was some discussion regarding a Google form in particular that a patron could fill out with a proficiency level and that would be reviewed by either the director or whoever's going to be reviewing those forms. And then you could be put on a list for, you know, of Grafton residents that could potentially drop in and play if it's available. So we thought that was kind of interesting. Because this is really something that we haven't encountered in policy committee before. But beyond that, there's some discussion about non-Grafton residents requesting time, you know, if Billy Joel wanted to come to Grafton and needed a place to, to play for a bit. You know, we were thinking, looking at the Piano Me app. And, you know, they can request time and we would say that the Grafton Public Library has a piano available. So I think there's just some research that, that Debbie is gonna bring back to the Policy Committee regarding some of the fees for that. So nothing to approve for the board at this point. But I think we're very close with the 3D printer policy and the piano policy is coming, coming along very nicely. And to that end, I believe we're gonna, it's time to review. Beth can, can certainly add here to review policies that are currently in effect, just to kind of renew and refresh them as part of our normal processes. So not new policies, but the policies that may need another review. So. Any questions?
Thank you. And just for point of context, the Disability Commission has shifted its name to be more inclusive. And so it's the Accessibility Advisory Commission. So thank Christie Proctor for, for coming from the AAC. Is there any questions on the ongoing work from the Policy Committee? Doug?
Just a, just a quick question on the piano. Is the intent that people can rent the piano? You know, if someone wanted to get lessons on the piano, would they be coming to the library to rent it? Or is it really just more for recitals and stuff like that?
Go ahead, Beth.
My, my idea, I think, is we already have a facility rental policy in place. And if somebody wanted to come in and rent after hours to use the piano, say for private lessons, a private recital, a paid concert, or Billy Joel from out of town, it could happen. It would basically be a room, a room use fee and they'd check off that they wanted the piano as well. But putting the piano listing on the Piano Me app, it's almost like Airbnb but for piano. So I could, you know, rent out the piano that's across from me in my living room for $15 an hour and charge someone to come and play in my living room. And we can essentially do the same thing with the library, but it would be couched under the facility rental policy.
Yeah. Yeah, I have some questions about that. I don't, I'm sure we'll have time. But would someone supervise or be looking just to make sure that no one's damaging it?
They would have to fill out. Well, they would have to be vetted through, so Debbie has been working on a form, like, what's your piano proficiency? And they can say, oh, I'm a teacher. I have a degree. I'm a student and I'm in book whatever. And then, you know, we'll allow the use or not, whether we're open or they're after hours or not.
Okay. I just, okay.
The, I believe we were discussing the newest draft of the policy at our meeting on October 5th, which is public meeting on Zoom. We can send you the policy if you want to look at it and send us.
Okay. I'm just, I, I just don't want, I, I don't know. It just makes me, I mean, I do want the piano to be used, of course. But to put it on an app and the world at large can use it, it's really for the, I mean, it's, it's really for the Grafton Public Library, you know? And if some people, Grafton residents can't use it because other people from out of town are, I think that's defeating some of the purpose. Just something to think about.
Fair enough.
Yeah, just to bring that back, everybody who requests that is gonna have to go through a vetting process. I saw Debbie's hand and then John. Debbie, did you have something?
I was just gonna add that what we had talked about with the piano proficiency was for, like, people like Erin who know how to play the piano. If they're up there with their kids or whatever, that they fill out the form, but then also one of the library staff goes in to check to see. They sit down and play. Okay, he knows how to play. He's gonna take care of the piano. It also does state in there that when you sign the, you type your name to sign the form, that you're agreeing to the piano policy, which is the room rental policy, which also states that you're responsible financially for any damage to the piano. And I believe we talked about the Piano Me app being used as Grafton residents kind of get first, it's sort of an after-hours after days off type of a situation. I don't know how often they would be coming in and taking up time that Grafton residents would be using it. Because I did, I did look up all the information on that for the Policy Committee.
All right. Thank you, Debbie. John?
The, so the piano does have some sort of electronic system installed in it, right? So would you be able to hook it up to some sort of app or system or computer to have it, you know, play music for your event, even though you're not playing it?
Yes.
So in that case, the proficiency probably wouldn't apply, right?
No, but I guess we're gonna have to figure out, make sure who's ever having an event knows how to use it. And maybe we're gonna, I mean, Beth would scream at this, but we might have to have a staff person there. We might have to pay them to just double check. Because we don't want, if someone ruins it, I know you said that you signed something, but what, do we have to sue them to get the money to fix the piano? I just, it's just, it's not, it's a, I just think it's kind of gonna be a learning curve here. It's just like I saw Apple Tree Arts with their beautiful, great hall and their lighting system and everything. It was complicated. You have to really learn it to not hurt it and the audio system too. They usually have somebody like around to just check, you know, make sure everything's okay.
All right. Thank you, Dana, for that. Erin?
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate what Beth said is, you know, we're happy to, this is still a draft policy. And everything I'm hearing is great feedback. We want to hear it. I'm happy to send a draft copy to any trustee who'd like to review it ahead of time and, or just to join the meeting. And I'll make sure that they get notice of when we're meeting next. Because like I said, it's a brand new policy and we're just gonna do our best with it. And whatever we end up voting on as a board is what we're gonna go with. And, you know, like a lot of our policies, we're gonna get feedback from the public and say, we're gonna find out real quickly what works and what doesn't work. And then that's, you know, that's the process. But this first draft, we're gonna do our best with it. And, but we don't know what to expect. So we're happy to get any feedback ahead of time.
Okay.
And for any of those who were in question about that next meeting, it is next Wednesday, October 5th. So you can reach out to Erin if you want more specific details on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other questions at this point? Seeing none, let's move on to the director's report. Beth?
So after a year and a half, a year and a half for the pandemic, two years of the pandemic, however long this pandemic has gone on. And we're all gonna be hitting a one-year anniversary of opening to the public in about two weeks. We're finally seeing our numbers increasing to the point where we're getting close to where they were pre-pandemic. 2019, beginning of 2020, in terms of visitors, programs, questions, and all that other data that we track. I did just finish and submit the errors report for FY22, which I will probably send out for next month's meeting. So this is just the August overview. If it's in green, it means that the numbers went up compared to June or July. Circulation of physical items is finally creeping back up. I can tell you for the fiscal year, we circulated 107,000 items total, which is great. We're at around 153,000. For, I think FY19. Reference questions, I'm never sure if the numbers are low because people are cracking it very well or if we're just not getting standard kind of reference questions because everybody can just Google everything. We didn't add any items in July or August. But our new cataloguer started at the beginning of September and started clearing out our backlog. So you will see that number of items go up. We did add digital items through Overdrive, but this item tally is really just physical things, movies and books and magazines. We had staff put in 573 holes, which is a lot for August. 126 borrowers. I think we had a few more in July because of people coming in with summer reading. That's still a lot of library cards. And September is National Library Card Sign-up Month, and that's usually when we get the biggest number of new borrowers because we're promoting in the public schools at all those open houses for people to come get their library cards. So hopefully September's number will surpass this. We're still seeing like up to 10% of no shoe, no shows on our museum pass reservations. But we circulated 87 different museum passes to our, I think, 21 attractions in August. They do get a lot of use during the summer when the weather is good because all the outdoor ones are available. We've been staying at 100, over 100 subscribers for YouTube, and it's been more than a month. So I think I can turn the keys to that over to Debbie and she'll be able to rename our channel. I couldn't figure out how to do it, Debbie. You'll have to do it. Facebook followers and Facebook likes are not the same thing. I think we have more likes than followers or hovering just under 1,800 followers and over 2,000 likes. Instagram is increasing. Pinterest is increasing. Twitter is increasing, all just by a little bit. We did get a lot of new names for our constant contact, which is our library newsletter, because we promoted that heavily at National Night Out at the beginning of August, where we did a little raffle drawing. We also have the option now, right through our catalogs, to ask a new borrower who's signing up for the library card for the first time, if they'd like to be added to the library newsletter. And it's actually somebody's job to pull the report every month and take those email addresses for people who said yes. And then add them to the constant contact list. So that's lots of more eyeballs seeing the content that we put out. Electronic database use was up and down for the summer. We have somebody who really likes ancestry.com and uses it for genealogy daily. I was surprised Gail databases got so many hits. That's, you know, all these different business and gardening and cooking, all kinds of interesting databases. There was a turnover in July. They have a new contract every year at the state. So we did some pushing through our library newsletter of those databases. So I'm happy that the numbers have increased. We did a big push for Hoopla. It had 700 and almost 50 uses. Comics Plus had been like getting 30 people a month. It's online comics and manga for kids, teens and adults. And it's amazing, like nothing is, is never available. Like you can just get it and it's streaming and it's always there, almost 200 uses, which is awesome. Freego dipped up and down. Sometimes there's 200 people using it, sometimes there's not. So this month was still higher than last month, but still not great. Freego is our music streaming platform. Can stream up to three hours a day. And you can also download three songs a week in digital format to keep. I suspect a lot of people are either paying for Apple Music or Spotify or they're just making playlists for free on YouTube and dealing with the commercials. We're trying to assess whether we should continue with Freego because it's very expensive. And I don't think we're always getting our bang for our buck with Freego. We are also looking at other streaming digital video platforms to replace Hoopla because Hoopla's content is not as regulated or curated as we would like. So we may be switching to something else. Eric, our newest reference librarian is doing some research on what else is out there. So we may be switching to Canopy or Filmocracy or something else, you know, in the near future. Mass driving test, if you have teenagers who are gonna be going for their license soon, they can take a version of the test online through this database. I think people don't know about it, but it's out there and it gets a couple hits every month. Teen Resource Center, I just can't get the statistics for, so because I don't know, I just keep reporting zero. This is a link to teen health and wellness articles that deal with everything from mental health and sexuality to issue, health issues in the news, to self-care. It's really well vetted. And I, I think it might be a little bit too dry and it's not really getting too much use. So we may be reevaluating that as well. Tutor.com, I got a reference question today asking if a staff member could read and review a patron's dissertation. And I said, oh, you can email it to tutor.com. You can do it with essays, like college admission essays or with an English paper. You can send them like a calculus problem and they'll do a pretty quick, like one or two day turnaround to get you an edited version of the paper or do that problem as an example. They take a little bit longer, so you can't use it for homework. But it's a really great resource. In addition to having real-time tutoring for kids in grades K through 12 on all kinds of topics, they also offer these, you know, editing services as well. So we directed the patron to tutor.com. Some months it gets 20 hits, some months it gets two hits. We pay a flat rate for a certain number of sessions a year and we don't, they don't all get used. So every time somebody asks if the library offers tutoring or if we know of any tutors, we direct people to tutor.com. And it's just like a really great resource. We want more people to be using. Book flicks usually has hundreds of uses. And it got none last month. I guess everyone was on summer vacation. It's a streaming media service for kids. It has books, fiction and nonfiction that sometimes it'll read it to you or it'll have a little animation to it. And it's got a reading comprehension quiz. And that's by Scholastic. And then Teachables is great for homeschoolers. And we actually use it a lot in the, in the children's room to print out, take and make crafts and STEM activities. So I think we did all of our printing in July and then everybody was on vacation and nobody used Teachables. We did just renew book books and Teachables because it does usually get more hits every month. And it has been a really great resource. And then the thing that's been a big hit is something the capital campaign helped pay for. We have two AWE early literacy workstations, one for preschool and one for early elementary school. And they have a series of math and spelling and reading and literacy and STEM and STEAM games. And they have a series of math and spelling and reading and literacy and STEM and scene games. And there's always a kid when you go in the children's room, sitting at one of those two computers. So over 600 sessions in a very, you know, short month for people to use. We had 31 library programs for 259 people. We had 107 meeting room reservations. I think there were two no shows. But 200, almost 250 people used meeting rooms, whether that was the Cub Scouts, a homeowners association, somebody coming in for a meeting or just one-on-one tutoring, someone needed a place for their Zoom call or interview, needed help with taking a practice test. So these are all things people are using the meeting room for. And these are separate from library programs. No notarizing, no proctori, no proctoring, proctoring. 27 volunteers donated 105 hours of volunteer service and we delivered to 34 homes, checked out four seed packets. And my screen share actually won't let me scroll down and tell you how many computer uses we had or how many incident reports. Was it nine incident reports? I can't see because.
It says three incident reports and 351 for computer use.
And the computer use is just kind of what we're, we're self-tracking, which means there's a sign up sheet and someone has to put their name down. We still don't have any way to track our wireless use. We've now asked like every month for the last year for our IT provider to get us a way to track those statistics and cricket. And I had to put, I estimated 1,200, like 100 a month. That's everyone who walks in with their cell phone and gets on the guest network. That's anybody in a meeting who connects to the guest access through Zoom. That's anybody on their their iPad tablet, whatever, in the building. As opposed to someone sitting down at the Macs in the teen space, the computers in the children's room or adult space that are, you know, in theory wired. I'm hoping to get it eventually. I will continue to ask. And then I sent out a very long narrative report. It's 8:15. I'm not going to read it to you, but I'm happy to take questions or concerns. We have the weekly report too that goes out to the select board that I forward to everybody as well. Now, August was busy.
Thank you, Beth. Does anybody have any questions for Beth on the report? Doug?
Just two quick questions. So for the meeting room use, that's great. I mean, I the few times I've gone to the library to do things, I see like teenagers in there doing homework together. It's, you know, it's definitely great to see. When they, like when teenagers come in and they come in as a group and they want to go study somewhere, does that, is that getting tracked by that meeting use? Because they have to then go sign in and, you know, if they hadn't booked it in advance, but there's one available.
Yeah. And so today, today was the opposite. Today was a half day. So they all came at 10:30 and 11 and had their snacks and they split out to the building. So then all the adults who've been studying in like the historic reading room and the large print room went like, oh no, and went and they got study rooms. And then we opened the teen room and I covered downstairs so they could, all the kids could go downstairs. Immediately, one kid came to the desk and asked to sign up for a YA meeting room and I signed her up and her four friends. And then I noticed that some kids had just gone into the other room. So I just knocked on the door and said, you need to sign up to use this room. Can I get your information? And signed them up right on the spot. So it's a mix. Sometimes they're doing it in advance. Sometimes they're doing it on the, at the desk. Downstairs, those are the sliding doors that don't lock. So it's easy for them to get in and then staff have to be aware and go get their name so we can track the use. And also to hold anybody accountable for any damage. Whereas upstairs, all those rooms are locked. So you can't just go into the room unless you're slipping out while someone else is, you know, leaving, flipping in while someone else is leaving. So that's a little bit more controlled in terms of you have to go to the desk. We, if you're, we are either letting you in because you've made an advanced reservation or we're signing you up on the spot and letting you into the room. If that makes sense.
That's great. Yep. No, that's great. And the second question, yeah, the second question I noticed, you said the notary and passport service, you just don't have the staffing. Are you getting a lot of people that you've had to turn away because of that?
Yeah, we've been tracking on the no log. It's it's a couple of requests for passports a month. And notarization, I think we had been doing it and then we suspended it in the month of August because we had so many people out with vacation, with the retirement. And then people would just leave time. That we just said, we can't do it. The children's, there's one person in children's and one at the adult services desk who's trained to be a notary. And we were down to like, your children's room staff was out straight and we just suspended it completely for August.
Yeah. All right. So we'll see how it goes in September.
As far as I know, we're running it back for September. And I think that we're thinking of training additional people as well. There are three people at the municipal center. So if it's during the day, we can always refer. They still have to call and make an appointment. But also the municipal center is open now till seven on Tuesday night. So that's a good, good night to get things notarized because the clerk and the select board's office is open and there's two or three people there as well.
Yep. Okay, great. No, thanks for the detailed report as always.
Also, no charge for notary.
Thank you. Any other questions for Beth? All right. So we're going to close that out. I'm now going to open the meeting for any public input. It looks like we have two guests on. So Nancy, did you have any comments or questions you wish to share? Hearing nothing from Nancy. Steve, is there any questions or comments that you wish to share? All right, again, hearing nothing. I just want to remind everyone again that the policy subcommittee meeting is next Wednesday, October 5 at 7:00 PM. That will be conducted via Zoom. And our next Board of Library Trustees meeting is Wednesday, October 26 at 7:00, again on Zoom. With nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Could I just say one thing?
Sure.
I just wanted to thank the library. You know, I'm one of the organizing members of Smallstones Festival of the Arts. It's our fifth year and last year it was very exciting that the group was the first one to use your, the community room. But we're very excited. We have three programs coming up. And we appreciate that we have a great facility for them. And so I just wanted to say thank you. It's like Dr. Helen Wall is going to be coming and she's a, she's the Shakespeare expert. She's talked, I think she's been at Community Reading Grafton years ago. So hers, she's talking, but it's Shakespeare now and then. And then also Nicholas Cage, who happens to be a, he's, he is like award-winning author and journalist. And he resides in Grafton. So he's going to be speaking. It's called, it's called a writer's odyssey. So he's going to talk. And he also was asked, he also was one of the producers for Godfather and he had some bestselling books. And then I was trying to remember. Oh, yes. And then the other, the the other event, and these are all free. It's called Annie Adams Field and it's one of those history of play events. And that will be, that will be available. That'll be, I think that's, I think that's on a Saturday at 7:00 PM. But I could, the dates, well, I think I'm going to give the library the dates because we've had some people inquiring and there, some people are think it's a library event. And so we explained it wasn't, but maybe we just need to to give somebody the dates, the library, and they could tell somebody. But I just wanted to say thank you. It really means it's, we're really thrilled to be able to be back at the library and especially like Beth, you were just saying, it's been a year. I can't believe it. So thank you. Just wanted to say that. So and that all the events are free.
All right. Thank you, Dana. Again, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All right. All in favor, Doug?
I.
Erin?
Erin, I.
John?
John, I.
Dana?
I.
And Stephanie, I. With that, I bring the September 28th meeting of the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees to an end.